Yes, sir.
All right, are we live? All right, I want to call this meeting to order. And I asked, would you please rise for indication? I've asked Commissioner Pearson to lead our indication.
My God and Father in heaven, we're so grateful to you for the blessings you give to us each day with so many blessings that we truly don't deserve. We thank you for this great country that we live in, that we were able to wake up this morning with no war around us. Some of the turmoil that's going on in other countries, we're sorrowful for that, but we're grateful that it's not here amongst us. We pray your Holy Spirit is here with us today as we do our best to self govern Van Zandt County. Pray your blessings on the decisions that we make and hope that they're correct for would benefit people of our county. Go with us and forgive us when we fall short and we pray these things in Christ's name.
Amen. All right, pledge to the American flag.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pledge to the Texas flag, honor the Texas flag. My pledge is to be Texas, one safe under God, one individual. All right, follow this meeting to order at nine oh two. And we do have a forum. All of our commissioners are present and we'll move into item number two. And for those of you that see a new face up here on Friday afternoon, we swore in Commissioner Williams. And so he is with us today. So are there any general announcements? No? All right, is there any public comments? There are no public comments. All right, we will move into item number four consent agenda. Consent agenda or I have to consider routine by the commissioner's court and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the county judge or commissioner request an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Are there any items that need to be moved? Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So move first.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, tie.
I give it to Chad.
Give it to Chad, all right. All right, uh, all those in favor say aye. Oppose like sign, motion passes. Item number five, discuss, consider approving sheriff's office to obtain a general issue license plate warnings. Okay, is there a motion to approve the sheriff's office to obtain a general issue license plate for the exempt vehicle of twenty twenty one forty eight?
No motion.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Barton, is there a second?
Second.
Williams. By Mr. Williams. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose like sign, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you gentlemen.
Melanie. All right, item number six, discuss, consider allowing the county judge to sign an agreement with Safe Software to have the monthly cost moved to the IT budget from the fire marshal budget. And Scott, do you want to?
We made aware that the current safe system that they had with fire marshal's office expired and we looked at other options that happened in the local copy. And so we worked cloud based or would like to go to cloud based, so that's what we got.
Can you explain to us what Safe Software is?
It's how they track, uh, how they're subjecting, uh, requests and certifications and all that stuff.
Right. Okay. And they're going to be collecting money at their own office and they will be using that software to help reconcile that money too.
I believe so.
Okay. All right.
It puts it off site, so it's not local.
Right.
It's a little faster, easier to get to.
And they can do it remotely too, if they need to. Yeah, all right. So is there a motion to allow the county judge to sign agreement with Safe Software to have the monthly costs moved to IT budget from the fire marshal budget?
Why, why do we have to have an agreement when it's our business on what, before we're paying some in front? If we're paying, we're paying it now out of fire marshal, now we're going to pay it out of IT? Why do we have to have an agreement with them?
Well, agreements with Safe Software, it's not with IT and, and the Safe Software, we have to have agreement to use their software.
It's annual license agreement, not license agreement. There is a maintenance agreement and license agreement.
Right, and all, all the software license agreements are now channeled through the IT department to keep track of them.
I don't have a problem with agreement, signing an agreement with them, but I just, I, I thought we had to ask them if it's okay if we pay for it out of, out of another department. I'm going to see what's their business, what we're paying for.
I think we were kind of on the evergreen agreement from before. And when we went, so now we're going to the cloud, so we're going to kind of redo it all.
I don't think we're asking Safe permission to pay it from IT. I think we're just, I think it's how, how it worked. I think what he meant to say is we want to approve his program and we want to start paying it out of IT budget rather than fire marshal budget.
Right.
I think that was the intent of what he said. I don't think we're actually getting permission from the provider to pay it.
Because I believe you already put that in the fire marshal's budget to pay for that Safe System. You're saying it probably needs to go out of IT so that we can keep track of it better.
Right. All right, so is there a motion?
Don't believe him.
All right, is there a second?
Second, Pearson.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose like sign, motion passes. Item number seven, discuss, consider authorizing county judge to sign an interlocal cooperation contract with the local department of public safety for administrative position provided by the county. Uh, we, uh, and most, most all counties have an agreement with the DPS to provide them with uh, uh, administrative assistant to help them with their paperwork process. And while the, we pay for that individual, they report to the, to the DPS department and work out of it. And I looked up the agreement and the last one is, is, uh, uh, expired and we need to renew it. And so that agreement has been put in your binder and is there a, uh, motion to approve of the interlocal cooperation agreement with the local department of public safety?
Oh, I can, Tom, have you looked at it? I'm
Do you know if they already have the personnel standing by, uh, on this? Are they, as soon as we approve it, they're, they're ready to?
No, we, we've had someone there for years.
And they're, they're already in place.
They're already in place, yes. Yes, we've provided this for many years, this particular one.
In the administrative position, uh, do they, do they just respond to us or do they, do they have supervisor, do we have supervisory responsibility on?
No, we don't. Alls we do is pay them. We pay for that position and they, uh, they have county benefits. That's what it amounts to.
Correct supervisor is DPS Sergeant.
Sergeant Bradshaw. They, they report to Sergeant Bradshaw. He actually does the hiring of that individual.
Is the contract, the brand of bringing the same sort of has been?
Yes, the only thing we changed was updated, uh, uh, several outdated items and increased the amount because it was, uh, limited to, uh, fifty thousand a year and we're in excess of that now with the, when you count the benefits that the employee gets. No, we're paying a hundred percent.
So the seventy five thousand is, is total of benefits.
Correct.
It's not, that's not salary.
That's not salary now, and it's up to is what it is. And that's to account because it's a two-year agreement and to keep us from having to.
I make a motion, we renew the contract.
All right, motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second, Williams.
All right.
I should say the interlocal agreement.
Interlocal agreement, okay. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, sir. You said it's only two years?
Uh, I believe that's maybe four. It was, the last one was four. And I'm not sure what, what I put it in. I think I put it at two, but it could be four. Can you look and see what the term is on there?
I'm looking. It's for four years, we terminate four years from that effective date.
And it's also, uh, it can be terminated with thirty day notice by either party.
That's correct.
So. Yes, it's four-year contract. All right, any other discussion? The, uh, local government, see. Go back and see what L G E is. Got L G E, so as far as. L G, the, the, Van Zandt County is responsible for all personnel related management employee, uh, including payroll, benefits, periodic performance reviews, job coaching, disciplinary action, promotions and terminations. Uh, Van Zandt County employee will be immediately unable to work at DPS premises in cases of unacceptable job performance. The Van Zandt County employee may request a release from the assignment to DPS by submitting a request in writing, uh, to, uh, with a copy to DPS, LG, the, uh, Van Zandt County DPS, which continue their relationship, uh, Van Zandt County will identify replacement employee and recommend that employee to DPS.
So how is Van Zandt County supposed to do periodic performance reviews, disciplinary actions when they work with the D? We pay them, but they work with the DPS.
Correct.
How are we going to know?
The only way we would know is if Sergeant Bradshaw would inform us of unacceptable behavior.
She is thoroughly, I is on, that, um, prepares everything for my office. She's responsible for getting all that paperwork and evidence ready for submitting to me. And primarily, we're talking Sergeant Bradshaw, but I could identify problems and issue problems.
Any further discussion? Again, I just copied this from the prior agreement and updated two items. So, uh, all those in favor say aye. Oppose like sign, motion passes. Item number eight, discuss, consider, uh, discuss, consider and approve an application and resolution for Edco fiscal year twenty twenty five solid waste grant by precinct three.
Yes, sir, this is the executive council government's grant that they give on solid waste stuff every year. In the, in the past, we do our cleanup, uh, or, or once a year cleanup over in precinct three. Uh, I'm just asking for permission from the court, uh, to allow us to put in for this grant and for the county judge to sign a resolution stating so. That's in form of a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion been made in second. Do we know how much the grant is?
It did varies. It's normally around three thousand dollars, but it depends on how, how many applicants they have. I think this past year was right around two thousand. But we don't know. Uh, we'll, we'll put in for as much as we can get and they'll give us as much as they can.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose like sign, motion passes. Item number nine, discuss and consider T V C setting poles in Van Zandt County Road Eastman on Van Zandt County Road twenty one forty seven.
Yes, sir, that's, uh, over in precinct, uh, two and, uh, the reason I got involved in it is because of Fort Cliff came along. But they're extending, Van Zandt, uh, T V C is extending a line over on County Road point one forty seven. It's roughly at five, the address is five ninety and, uh, the property owner, uh, where they're doing a pose doesn't want the pose inside their fence. So they're requesting us to put them just right outside the fence on the easement, on the county easement. Uh, there's, it happens all the time, but, uh, Coffin County is a good, uh, T V C is a very good company to work for, to work with. And they always come to us for that permission to do so. Uh, one of the few utilities that do. So I make a motion, we allow them, so I believe there's three poles, uh, at the most that they'll be sitting in the right way, but it's on way on the back slope right next to the fence. They won't ever, uh, interfere with the operation of the road.
Okay, motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second that in, in my district precinct.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose like sign, motion passes. Item number ten, discuss, consider request for one-time exemption from platting requirements for Ted Burris on selling two point six five acres on Van Zandt County Road thirty five thirteen.
This is the first of many of these that we're going to start getting because in our new subdivision guidelines, we put in there, uh, that, uh, property owners can apply for a one-time, one, one tract of land sale without going through the platting requirements. But this is a, this is the first one I've had and I believe it's going to be the first one that's come before the court. Uh, Mr. Burris is selling that two point six five acres out of a three, three something acre tract he's got and that created a, a, um, the residue that he's going to have left is less than an acre. So he is, if you look in your, in the supporting documents, uh, Mr. Burris also has a piece of land behind that, uh, that house that he's keeping. The house that he's keeping is on that less than one acre. When, uh, Dennis Vault has sent a survey there where Mr. Burris has incorporated enough land into that to make it a one acre tract of land that he is not selling. And so the only other thing is this, uh, this is a new territory we're going into. There's no, if you exempt it from the guidelines, that exempts all the restrictions of whether, uh, you, you do the will serve letters for the utilities. So, uh, I talked to the, the, uh, water company this morning and they, and he said, there's, yes, there's plenty of water available at that spot. All they'd have to pay is their normal, uh, owner buying and charges and everything because it's a, a cooperative of water. So I'm going to make a motion that we accept this one-time exemption, with the understanding that this survey will be filed in making this residue one acre, over one acre, one point oh six acres at the same time and that, uh, uh, and that water is available.
Is there residence on this property?
There's not, so it's, uh, uh, no, and the, the, the house is on the residue that he's keeping. The house is on the one eight, one point oh six acres that he's keeping.
Okay.
And I've looked at this, uh, at Keith's request and I think the important thing here is when you start considering these exemptions, it's going to be, it's, it should be a very fact specific inquiry. It, everyone is going to be different, but this one, I'm not even sure they really needed exemption because he has a tract of land, he's selling off a piece that would make the remainder less than an acre. But at the same time, he's adding some from over here that makes it more than an acre. So it is going to comply. It's just those three minutes between the filings of the two deeds that it will be out of compliance.
Smith.
Is, Keith, is he selling this two point six five acres to, uh, an adjacent landowner or is he, is his intent to sell it to somebody brand new, you know?
That's how it all got started. He was selling it to his neighbor and then that started all this process. But in the meantime, his neighbor decided not to buy it and, but so somebody else came to him to buy it. So no, this current sale is not going to an acre or, or cancel.
That piece is in compliance because it's two point, the, the, the piece that's going to the new acre, to the new owner is over two acres and it's completely in compliance. It's the remainder that, that, once that deed is filed, the remainder is slightly less than an acre. But the next deed will take properties from over here and put in and make it more than an acre.
Correct.
So for five minutes it will be out of compliance and then it will be right back in.
Correct.
All right, so did you make a motion?
I did.
For this, okay, is there a second?
I'll second, Williams.
All right, motion has been made, second, any further?
He doesn't, he doesn't need an exemption though, does he?
He will.
He will have that one.
Yeah, to, to, he needs the exemption from the platting.
Okay.
All right, uh, all those in favor say aye. Oppose like sign, motion passes. Item number eleven, discussing, consider request for one-time exemption from platting requirements for Brian Allen on point eight 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 acres to be increased to approximately one point one one acres located on Van Zandt County Road forty one zero six.
This one is mine and I do not think they have to have an exemption for this because he is adding, he's not subdividing the land. He is adding point eight 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 acres to one point one one acres to get within the state code of the tract. And since we're adding acres and it's not a subdivision, I don't think we have to have an exemption. But, uh, I just want to make sure that that is right before we ran the exemption, that he can go ahead and do that. Just add the, uh, point three acres to this tract going in.
Uh, after reviewing it and looking at it, I believe Brandon is correct there. The gentleman owns two tracts of land now. He, he has a deed and in that deed it says tract one and tract two. He wants to, he, he wants to sell his, the, the tract one, but it's let, it's only eight eight, point eight eight acres. So he's going to resurvey it. When he gets through, he'll still have two tracts of land. He's not going to have, there's not going to be more tracts made. So so I think by law he's not subdividing, he's just changing boundary lines.
Will they both be more than an acre?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
Keith can explain a little bit better than I can, but yeah.
If they weren't already two tracts of land, then he, I think he would need the, the exemption.
Yeah, that's exactly what he has to do to comply before he can sell one, is to make them both more than an acre.
Both more than an acre. So we can just table.
I believe that's
No action.
I believe just table it or no action is allowed.
No action on that. All right, uh, item number twelve, discuss, consider request for lot size variance for Jamie and Corbin Hodge on one point nine six acres dividing, uh, into two lots located on Van Zandt County Road forty eight twenty one.
This is mine also, and I spoke with, with the Hodges and I told them that I could not support this, but I would take it to court. Uh, in our subdivision rules, each tract land has to be at least an acre and they're wanting to make one, one acre or one point nine, one point nine six. And, uh, my reasoning is why I have the subdivision rules and regulations if we don't abide by them. So, uh, I told him I bring it to court and let the court decide on this variance, but I could not split.
So they currently have one lot at one point nine six acres, correct?
Yes, they have one lot at one point nine six. They want it divided into two lots, one, one acre and one point nine six acres. But in the subdivision rules and regulations, it has to be at least an acre. And if you do this for them, then you're going to be doing it for Johnny, Joe, Timmy and Todd. I mean, they're just going to be coming, coming through. So I do, I, I can't support it, but I told him I bring it to court.
Well, I think that's the noble thing for you dudes because it's not a, an individual's decision. You, you can't make that decision out there for them legally. It has to, it has to be a court decision. So I thank you, Noble, for doing that, but I agree with you. If we're going to do it, we might as well go change our guidelines. But that's, that's a T C key thing on this one acre, not Van Zandt County. That, they're the ones that want one acre or the home size.
And the county would be responsible for anything, we, if anything happened, we would be responsible on that point nine six, not the state.
You know, legally I would tell you if they have some compelling reason they should figure it out like this, but if it's just a routine around the mill, that's what we wanted to.
When I get there talking to them, uh, they just wanted to sell two lots like that. If they couldn't, they just sold it all at one. That's like, well, that's probably what you're going to have to do if it was, it's just up to me.
Okay, so there's no action?
No, call for a motion.
Okay, is there a motion to, uh, request, uh, or lot size variance for Jamie and Corbin Hodge on one point nine six acres dividing into two lots located on Van Zandt County Road forty eight twenty one? All right. There is no motion made, therefore there's nothing to pursue.
The gentleman, all these last three agenda items, as Commissioner Pearson mentioned, this is something new we're going to see a lot of. And we've pretty well stumbled through these three. I'm glad Ms. Tom was here to help us with that. I feel like we need to schedule a workshop next week, bring Ms. Tommy in and kind of sit down and discuss this and kind of all get on the same page with how we want to handle them and what information we want to gather going forward.
Okay, do you have a suggested time on, on the workshop?
I'm sure we can all get together and agree on something.
Well, why don't we do it while we're all here together? You want to do it Wednesday? No? Okay, Tuesday?
No, Keith, you're busy.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, I don't have my, my calendar. Thursday, that's right, Thursday?
I'm good on Thursday.
We're going on Thursday, Thursday at nine?
Let's see, this is, what day would that be?
S- September, September fifth.
So we'll tentatively schedule it for, uh, Thursday, September fifth at nine AM. And then we'll check our calendars later. If we need to revise it, we will. And there may be other items we put on having a workshop because there are some other things that we need to talk about. All right, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Motion passes, we are adjourned. At nine, nine twenty nine.
Nine, nine twenty nine. And I'll get it further into those some of these rules.
What, what we really need to do is have our What we really need to do is have our old, is do a comparison chart with our old subdivision and our new subdivision. But only for those items that have changed. So I'll try to do that. All right. You're gonna need to, uh, sign this, but you can scratch that out. That's right.
Okay. David, thank you.
But now your picture's not on page one.
Oh, that's, that's good. That's good. You could have left the picture out.
Take care, Dan.